Good evening, folks. I'd like to welcome you to the regular scheduled board meeting of the recreation park district on Wednesday, March 20, 2024. Ms. Jones?
Thank you. To lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening, I'd like to welcome to the podium Heather Schelsky, who is our Recreation Supervisor Two. And following the pledge, our Superintendent Chase Michelotti will provide an introduction.
A two-year public review of these statements, one nation, under God, and he has been the law, but it's a very convenient justice.
Good evening, Chair Danzel and members of the board. Tonight, I'd like to recognize Heather Schelsky, our Recreation Supervisor Two at the Neil Orchard Senior Activities Center, NOSEC. Heather's been in the recreation field for 24 years, eleven and a half with CRPD. In her time here, she has overseen a wide variety of senior and active adult activities and programs, which currently includes over 20 classes at NOSEC, 10 annual trips and excursions, Collette trips, the Green Thumb Garden and Lunch Program, and district-wide special use permits. Heather is also our CPRS District Two Aging Section Representative. Currently, Heather and her team are organizing and preparing for a robust spring class and program schedule, a trip to the Northern California Cherry Blossom Festival, and their next big luncheon fiesta, which includes a delicious Mexican-style feast. In addition to creating and running programs and coordinating classes, daily Heather and her team continue to effectively manage a growing number of special use rental requests for large and at times complex events put on by the community. We're thrilled to have Heather as a longstanding and valued member of the CRPD Recreation Team and look forward to all the wonderful opportunities she and her team continue to provide to our local senior and active adult community members. Heather, thank you.
Thank you, Morgan.
Thank you. Let's move on to action item or item number two.
Thank you. This is the portion of our meeting where we deal with any AB2449 requests and seeing them will list it as no action taken.
Thank you, ma'am. So that means no roll call.
Director Yearwood.
Here.
Director Mattis.
Here.
Secretary Langin.
Here.
Vice Chair Sloan.
Here.
Chair Danzel.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Let's go on to item B, comments by public on non-agenda items.
Thank you. I just want to welcome everyone on the Zoom call this evening and announce that we have one member of the public joining us this evening on Zoom.
Sure.
Members of the public may address the board on topics within the district's jurisdiction that are not listed on this agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. It's a violation of state law for the board to discuss or take action on non-agenda items. Board members may only briefly ask clarifying questions or refer the matter to staff. And at this time, I see no requests.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Then let's move on to item C, presentations.
Thank you. Item C1 is a presentation on the CRPD draft optimized plan. This is an informative presentation only. No action to be taken by the Board of Directors at this time. This is the opening of the public review period. And from Gates and Associates, I'd like to welcome Casey Case.
Hi, good evening. Do I need to do anything with the screen?
We're good.
Okay, okay. And do I have to do anything with the screen? Or you guys can see what you're supposed to see.
We can see.
Great. All right. So it's a pleasure to chat with you guys this evening. I have had the opportunity to talk a little bit about this project before, so here I am again. Tonight, we are only discussing that this package, this draft document, is going to be available for review. Yes. Oh, presentation mode. I did need to do something abuse in my slideshow from the beginning. Wonderful. So we are going to make this draft document available for review. And I'm going to give it an overview tonight, update you guys since the last time I was able to see you and talk through the document itself. So our, as I just mentioned, our effort tonight is to remind you what this project is, why I'm here, the efforts we've gone through since the last time I was able to chat with you guys, give an overview of the document and talk about the next steps. So I am Casey Case from Gates and Associates. We are a landscape and planning firm. We were working on this project since 2022 with an awesome team from the district staff and also a team from Gates and Associates. It's been a pleasure working with you guys. We were brought into work on the optimized plan and the purpose was to create a long-term document that helps to implement future projects that meet the current and future needs of residents. So we wanted it to be an action document that doesn't just sit on a shelf, but really creates a roadmap as things become available. Where do we start and what do we prioritize? So it was meant to be for a 15-year span. It was founded in robust community engagement, so we're not just making stuff up. We're making sure things people actually value and need. We evaluated existing conditions so we could come up with what those needs were. And we projected those things into what the population is likely to be and follow recreation trends so that the recommendations we make are in line with likely to see the needs that we're hoping to meet. And we also made sure that we were reasonable with maintenance and capital expectations and that we aligned with other local documents that may have an influence or a parallel purpose with this document as well. So we broke this project up into three rounds. We're currently in our final stages in round three. So we started by listening. What is it we need? What's working and not working? Then we had a round two that's really understanding what those existing conditions are and what needs to be better or different. And ultimately, we take the difference between those two and make recommendations of how to continue to be an awesome district in the future. So the last time I was able to chat with you guys, we were kind of finishing up our round one. So I wanted to close out that little update before I talk through the structure of the document. So in our round one community outreach, we had a ton of public engagement, which was really fun to see people excited to talk about their parks and their recreation opportunities. We were at several events, also had an online survey and had several stakeholder interviews as well. So lots of insights about specific the parks, big ideas, what people are looking for in their park and recreation district. Then we did a round two, which consisted of two pop-up events, and we asked people questions about what they prioritize. So we're like, we heard these things in round one. These are some of the amenities and such you'd like to see. But if we can't do everything at once, which is the purpose of a master plan, how do we begin to allocate what happens first and is most important in our community? So we had those two pop-up events where we had that conversation and also an online webinar for anyone who wasn't able to be there in person. So that process led to this understanding those existing conditions, having conversations with users, the community, and analyzing how it compared to other districts to then lead us to recommendations. What can we do to improve our existing parks, plan for future parks and everything in between? And then ultimately, how do we implement that? What does the action look like? How do we maintain it? How do we fund it? And what will those costs potentially be? So that leads us to our document. So the document is structured into these sections. We have the executive summary, the introduction, community context, the needs assessment, the recommendations, and then the implementation plan. And again, it's meant to span for 15 years, so it's a long-term vision. So the first section is an executive summary. This does a brief synopsis of each chapter within the document, giving a really abbreviated view of the highlights and the big important stuff that we took away from each chapter. So if you really want the Cliff Notes, you only have to read this, but there's a lot of really cool fascinating stuff in the rest of it. It's like a cool nearly 400 pages. So I get it if this is a chapter that you really, really like because it's brief and to the point. Then we move into the introduction, which talks about the purpose of the plan, why are we here, what's it meant to do? What is the role of a Parks District and why do we care about this document in the first place? Then we move into the community context. So how did we gather this information? What did that outreach process look like? What did we hear? What other relevant documents did we make sure were explored and ran parallel to this document as well? And it was also understanding what is the demographic makeup of our community now? And what is it likely to be in the future if those trends persist as we've been seeing them? And also, as I mentioned, what are some of the recreation trends that we're seeing in our local benchmarking cities? Also, just in the national NRPA, so the National Play Recreation Analysis as well, like what are we seeing as popular that things are going to want? Let me give you a, it's pickleball. It's always pickleball. So with that. Then we went through needs assessment. So this is where we compare what is there to what would we like to have there? We're benchmarking again those local districts and seeing where they lay in things. And sometimes we're right on the mark. Sometimes we're a little above. Sometimes we're a little below. So this is still just information gathering, which will inform the goals and recommendations that we propose. We also did an analysis of the recreation programs, trying to understand what's offered. How does that compare to local districts? And then what is our cost recovery on those and give a financial assessment, which really evaluated the health of the district and what needs to be compared to other communities as well. Then we come into our goals and recommendations. So we have goals that align with the high-level goals of safety and inclusivity, sustainability, and also more specific as we get into each park. So some of them are district-wide goals of just things we need to be doing in the future to make sure things remain as vital and well-used as they are, as well as things like these are a baseline standard that we need to perpetuate in parks moving forward. We also have classifications in this section where we designate parks as either neighborhood, community, or recreation facility. And there are minimum thresholds that need to be done for those kind of classifications in the future. And then we also make recommendations for parks that maybe don't exist yet. So if there are missing amenities within our needs assessment now, those are things we'd like to plan for in the future. And then implementation talks a lot about what happens first and what are the costs of those things? So how do we make these decisions as these funds become available? Or as a new developer comes in and they may be offering to build more amenities? So we talk about the prioritization of park improvements and other amenities that we need to see. We propose a maintenance schedule, which might have overarching things for all parks and the frequency that things need to be replaced or reevaluated. And we also talk about some of the potential funding strategies for that. So there's a lot of different conversations about where different cost recovery elements could come from. And then we also include an action plan. So this may be high-level, district-wide, we need to do these things. Or also park-specific, these are a priority. And we include project costs, whether it's on a square footage basis or an amenity basis, we have both of those in there as well. So that's a super fast, high-level explanation of this 400-page document. But it's hopefully an easy and enjoyable read. We tried to make it very like graphic and bullet points where we can. So it's not a ton of words and really full of the meaty stuff and not a lot of other fluff. So that's where we are today. We will be posting this draft document on the website that's shared here. And there's an opportunity to provide comment on it through that as well. With that, oh, we will also be coming back to the board for final consideration on May 15. Great.
Great.
Questions I can answer. I'm happy to.
Presentation.
The only question I had for you is a standpoint of 1,600. Good. Into this, I mean, our district's about 130,000 people now.
Yeah. So what we do, what we try to do whenever we start off with community outreach is we kind of set parameters of like what qualifies as successful to us. So what we really tried to do was hit a slice of the community. So since we'd done a little bit of history on what is the demographic and what are the primary park users? We felt like the slice that we got of the community was a good representation of that demographic spread. And we also, we liked that number. That's a pretty solid number of people coming out and giving their opinion and having conversations. The events that I was at, people were very engaged and passionate as well, which is really nice to see. People care and they're into it.
So how many pages is the actual document?
The actual document is, you know, I keep saying it's 400 pages. There's tons of graphics and pictures and a lot of it, there's almost like two to three pages for every park. So you don't necessarily have to look through and see like, what restroom did they say needed to be added where? Because we show every park in existence and the recommendations for each one. So it's a big bulk of it. Makes it a lot less intimidating.
It was interesting appendix.
And an appendix that is a supplemental document that has a lot of the background context and data of the outreach and our presentations and a lot of the supplemental supportive documentation is there.
That's why. So I mean, it's just one of those things where it's like the average person can read 40 pages an hour. And so at 780, that's 20 hours of reading.
Right.
And so my biggest concern is, you know, the same thing that you brought up, Chair Yearwood, was about the reach that we had. So I'm just more concerned about having the public have enough time to read this because it's a lot to read. And then just to read through it, not even take notes, it could take, you know, 15 to 20 hours to read.
Right.
And then let alone try to go back and answer questions.
Yeah, there may be the opportunity. And I mean, I highly recommend if somebody is able to read the whole thing. But if that is too much of a time commitment, I think it's possible, the way we've structured the document, to read the sections that are pertinent. So if somebody's really interested in like what's happening with the park nearest my home, they can read the recommendations and find that specific park and they may not be as concerned as reading about the documents that we investigated to make sure they were incorporated in this, in this plan. Right. So I'm hopeful that it's structured in a way that people can find the information that's relevant to them. And it doesn't necessarily need to be proofread because we did that a lot. I'm hopeful that that.
Oh, it's not just. But it's just.
Right.
You have somebody that wants to dive into it and read it.
Absolutely.
Just want to make sure that they have enough time to make a comment, to voice their opinion, especially with, I mean, I wish we would have had more. I mean, are we going to blast this out on social media? That it's going to be out there and available and multiple times?
Yeah, the plan is for us to post it on our website starting tomorrow morning.
Okay.
And then we will reach out to all of the people that have engaged with us through our stakeholder meetings, as well as anyone that has the track record of providing survey information. We will send it out to everyone that's been a part of this served list. Those are mostly the people that have engaged with us, but ultimately it will live on our website for, I think it's 32 days because we were going to close it, I believe, April 21st. And so if you think that there's a need for us to extend that, it's something we can consider. If that's a concern of your guys'.
I think it would probably be better to see what the totals are as we get closer to see if it's worth extending it or talking about it.
Sure.
Secretary Langin.
My biggest question is, and this might have to go to General Manager Larkin, just with the final board consideration of 5:15. Is that, that is a Monday. It says. Yeah, May 15. Yes. Is that when it closes? Or is that when?
It's a 30-day public review period that we're opening up this evening. So it will close on the 21st. And then from there, we have some time that we need to take those comments and then be able to respond to those comments, record those comments. And then from there, it gives us another couple of weeks for them to come back and consider the approval of the final document.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Vice Chair Sloan.
Well, I'm curious about the date 2040 we have in this document. This optimized plan is supposed to take us to 2040, that's 16 years from the future. A lot of the choices that were made by the parents and their kids, kids were four, five, six years old. They're making choices on things that they want for the age that the kids are then. What about those kids when they get older and do we take it to the next level where we're finding out what they would like to see? As when their kids become adults kind of later on in their life, it doesn't, is as if we look at it again in, say, seven years, eight years? 15 years is up and evaluate things because cultural diversity will change. And a lot of times people want to see cricket and I don't know if we've addressed cricket.
I can probably better answer that than Casey. So this is a snapshot in time and that is the purpose of this master plan. There's no projecting how what will exactly happen. But with this guiding document, the staff will be reviewing this periodically to make sure that we're creating CIP plans associated with the direction of this document. We're looking at new trends that may occur. Maybe there's a new sport that happens between now and 2040. Who knows, right? So we are keeping it as a tool, as a guide, but this is really a snapshot in time because we don't have a crystal ball, but we will be using it instead of just putting it on the shelf and then taking it down to 2040 and updating it. The intentions were for us to use this absolutely as a guiding tool. So, and it is very specific. This is in a cookie cutter type of document. This is very drilled down and specific to our, our district. So I think you guys will see that as you read through it. The very specific directions that we've worked with the consultant on to get us to where we are today. So.
I think the district did a really good job as well, trying to program in some flexible space as well. Because that was a big thing we heard in our, in our prediction, as you can call it, of recreation trends is it's like, we know we don't know, right? So we need to try to make things be multi-use and have some flexibility. And ideally, we didn't only talk to people with young kids. We talked to seniors and we talked to some of the teens and do our best to really get a broad perspective of it. But I do think it is a moment in time. So it's, it's a fair question.
Thank you. Having gotten a chance to look at obviously the document yet, but over my time here, this is an optimized plan. We've had master plans before. To answer some of the questions from some of the board. We talk about the comment period. I sat through a master plan. It took us two and a half years to do and we received one comment. And we put that out for 60 days. And it's the same, same basic principle of what this is. And it was short. It was only 300, just under 300 pages. So it'll be interesting to see where this, where this comes in. We're not the only agency doing this right now. The City of Sacramento just put out their Parks and Rec also for up to 2040. So I was very, I think I sent it to the general manager and, and Director of Parks the other day because I saw it and I was like, oh, good. We're not the only ones doing this. That document though is the 700 and somewhat pages. That one's ridiculous. I started reading it and I'm like, uh, yeah, I'm glad I don't live there because I'm not going to try and understand this. But looking at their document and it's very easy to read and very understandable. If you, you know, live anywhere, you can grab it and go, okay, I'm looking at McKinley Park. Great. It talks about McKinley Park and what they need and what, you know, things and how they're going to grow. But it's a living, breathing document. So it's just gonna, we're gonna learn from it. We're gonna grow from it. Like General Manager said, you know, pickleball 10 years ago didn't, you know, wasn't a big thing. Now it is, you know? And 10 years from now, we might have, you know, lawn darts again. Who knows? But you know what I'm saying? In a safe way. But that could be, you know, things change and we're going to grow with it. So I'm very interested to spend the time to read this because I am, when it comes to Parks and Rec, that kind of geek that will sit there and read all 400 pages. It's not a problem. And I'm not that person who reads 40 pages an hour. I'm the one that reads about 15 an hour because I sit there. I want to absorb it. So I'm excited for this document. I can't wait to, you know, read it first thing tomorrow morning. I have, you know, other than hopping and hunting on Saturday, that's probably what I'll be doing is reading this document. Because it's, I can't wait to see what, what, you know, the direction we're going to go. So.
The book will look better with coffee stain on it too. Circles on the cover. It's part of it.
How does it, how does it factor in the cost estimate? It's taking consideration inflation and like we just recently, if you were building something using wood, there's wood, but with the pandemic, you know, how does it factor in the cost?
So what we've done is we took cost information from the projects that are currently being bid that we know of and looked at some of those costs, added inflation to some of those. And then in the appendix, which is the extra several hundred pages, there's some justification for those cost numbers. So if and when things are different, you can see how that line item was generated and adjust it accordingly as, as needed.
Takes into consideration the lifespan of 16 years of stuff that we put in 16 years ago, we're going to replace.
Right.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
So Shelby, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I will. Can we talk about how the public and the board can actually make comments? The appropriate way for them to be received and our plan for that and how that, those comments go to Gates to process and then come back. Can you kind of give us a little insight as to how folks can actually comment appropriately so that Gates gets that information?
Yeah. So we talked a little bit about that reach. We are doing social media and everything like that. The public can make comments to us either through a Google, sorry, a Google form, which will be directed directly to the consultants, or they can also email us. And so we'll throw that onto the consultant. So we'll have a full track record of anyone who comments about those comments are. So. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. I'm excited for this, so.
I would want to say that the presentation here was much better than what we got in the packet because, you know, it was just scanned. So it was very hard to read. So it was nice to actually see it on the screen. So it was good. Thank you.
Let those 32 days start. Let the comment period open up. So thank you very much for the presentation, Ms. Case. And let's move on to.
Chair Danzel, I just want to verify that we have no requests for public comment on that presentation.
Sorry to the public for that. Let's move on to item D, Committee Reports.
Thank you. Item D1 is a standing committee report for district policies on March 5th. And that's Chair Danzel and Secretary Langin.
Secretary Langin, I'm going to turn it over to you to start and go through what you'd like and then I'll catch up.
Yeah. So it was a, it was a really good meeting, very insightful. Just to know that, you know, what's going on, know everything and just to know that policies are changing all the time. They don't stop just because we stop. And so there were four, I believe, that were laws. So nothing we can really do about it, but we, it's good for us to know, good to know what's in there. And the other, that was the sick leave accrual, accrual, the reproductive loss leave, drug and alcohol policy and off-duty cannabis use. And then the fifth one was the holidays. And so just kind of benchmarking other agencies about getting one more floating holiday.
Thank you. It was a great meeting. Lots of questions got answered. Lots of things got discussed. Got to love it when the, when policies changed because it's law. We don't have to do anything. Ms. White just says, okay, this is, we have to change this. Let's change this. There was a policy was brought up. It was brand, brand new. It was brought up by myself. And it was just to make sure that basically the Board of Directors is doing what we need to do and that our Vice Chair and our Chair of the District are, have all their trainings and certifications done before they get to that, that point. Plus, it also gives the district this transparency certificate that allows the district to look good because we're all under the same, we've all been trained the same. We all understand what's going on. We understand the Brown Act, things like that. Other than that, it was, you know, like I said, a great, great meeting. I'm looking over my notes and there was a lot of, lot of pages to it. But like, just like Secretary Lang said, most of it was talking about laws that we had to change. So other than that, I don't have anything. So I guess we can move on to item E, Consent Calendar.
Thank you. Consent calendar items are considered administratively routine and will be acted upon in one motion unless separate action on a specific item is necessary. The chairperson will consider any request for discussion on the items prior to approval of the consent calendar. This evening, we have five items for your consideration. And Chair Danzel, I would like to pull item E1 for a separate vote, please.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there any member of the board that would like to pull any other item? On the consent? Any on pub, in the public? Any on Zoom?
I see no requests.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve item E2 through E5, the consent calendar?
I move the Board of Directors to approve consent calendar items E1, E2, E3, E4, and E5.
Can I get you, Secretary Langin, to amend that to just E2 through E5? E1 has been pulled by. So if you would remake that motion for us, please.
I move the Board of Directors to approve, approve consent calendar items E1, E3.
Oh, sorry.
E2, E3, E4, and E5.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Secretary Langen and a, a second by Director Mattis. All those in favor?
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Director Mattis?
Aye.
Secretary Langen?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Chair Danzel?
Aye.
Let's move back to item E1, Ms. Jones.
Thank you. This item was pulled for a separate vote due to the absence of Director Mattis from the February 21st board meeting and requesting abstention.
Thank you, ma'am. Hearing that, do I hear a motion for item E1?
Chair Danzall, make the motion that we approve item E1 of the consent calendar.
Thank you. I have a motion by Director Yearwood.
I'll second this.
I have a second by Vice Chair Sloan. All those in favor?
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Director Mattis?
Same.
Secretary Langen?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Chair Danzel?
Aye.
Thank you, folks. Item F, public hearings. We have none tonight. Let's move on to item G, regular calendar items.
Thank you. Item G1 is to discuss and take action on the future format for public forums at Cordova Recreation and Park District Board meetings that are subject to the Ralph M. Brown Act. So as the district moved through and past the pandemic, the district continued to offer Zoom as a means of transparency and ease of accessibility to the public. Zoom meetings, while offering many benefits, also can be vulnerable to Zoom bombing. It's a time, it's timely for the board to consider and provide direction to staff on how public formats will be offered going forward. Eliminating Zoom subscription is not being recommended by staff at this time because it would be needed for future formats for AB2449 requests. So the question before the board tonight is not whether or not to use Zoom, but rather it's, does the board wish to keep offering live viewing and real time online public comment? We have provided several options for the board's consideration. Option one is to keep the existing format and make no changes. This means that board meetings will continue to be hybrid. With full in-person and Zoom participation, public comment will be accepted in person on Zoom and in writing. Option two is to keep the live viewing, but switch to a webinar format. This allows public to view meetings virtually, but restricts verbal and chat comments to those attending in person. There is a fiscal impact associated with this option. This result will be board, board meetings will continue to be hybrid and a webinar will be offered as a means of public viewing, the meetings live. Public comment will be accepted in person and in writing. And then option three is to return to the pre-pandemic format of in-person only with no live viewing. Only the regular meetings, board meetings will be recorded and those recordings will be posted to the website and YouTube after the meeting. Board meetings will be in person. Public wishing to attend must do so in person only. And public comment will be accepted in person and in writing. So I'll turn it over to Chair Danzel.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Jones. Do I have any comments from the public on this? Do I have any?
No requests.
No request. Okay. Director Yearwood, we'll start with you. Thoughts?
Um,
97.
I know this is, is this, it seems to be like a growing trend. I mean, we know, I've heard the city had issues with it. Have many other agencies had issues with these Zoom bombs?
Um, I sat with, uh, CARPD last week and the Bay area had already been hit. And, uh, the Sacramento area is starting to be hit now. I mean, I can go either way with option one or two. I don't particularly wish to go back to the old days where you just had to be here. Okay. Director Mattis?
Yeah. So this is my wheelhouse. That's what I do. So.
You do Zoom bombing?
No, not Zoom bombing, uh, web streaming. So the options here are good. Now I think we should probably look at a fourth option. Um, is, so we do the, the in-person setup that we have. Mark, with the setup back there with that software, can you stream to YouTube, Facebook, Twitter? So my recommendation is an option, the fourth option like that. So we still have it in person. It streams to YouTube, streams to, uh, the social channels. There's no way to comment on it. All people can do in the public do is view it. If they want to make, uh, and so you have to make this, you know, clear in the, uh, board package and the board notices going forward. If you go with this option, that way they have to be here in person or with the Brown Act, what, what's the rules with, uh, people emailing?
Same, just written.
Is it 24 hours in advance?
Nope.
Up to, I think six o'clock or five o'clock when you walk.
I usually put 3:00 PM on meeting days, just so I can process all the papers if they come in.
Okay. And then with that, with, with what you have back there, you can do like live production. So you can put lower thirds and graphics and everything on there and feed the presentation and all that. And what's also nice about that too, is, um, I see that you have like the cloud storage with YouTube. You stream it on there, you produce it live, it's going on there. It's, once the meeting's done, it's over. It's on, it's on YouTube. So what you produce and sent over there, it's done. It's all ready to go. So you don't have to do anything down the road unless there's like a closed session. Um, once it's up online, you can go in there, log into it and clip out the part where the board went into closed session. And you can put, you know, a time on the board went into the closed session at, uh, eight o'clock, board came out at nine o'clock. And just put that in there. Uh, that's a much better way, I think, with doing it because that way you still have people to do the actual requirements because the video part of the Brown Act, it's just more of a benefit with the video, right? It's not required.
Yeah. Video and live streaming is not required by the Brown Act.
Yeah. And so that's just an added bonus. So I think just, um, and plus you, you know, you can shut off the comments. Some people can't leave comments. They can give you a thumbs up. That's about it. If they like your meeting. Um, but I think then that, that's kind of the thing is that's what a lot of agencies are going to, a lot of way to reach the public that way. And I think, yeah, I think you still should be either an email comment or somebody in person.
Okay. Would there be any costs associated with your fourth option?
You already have the equipment. You already have everything now. It's just, the only cost really is just setting up the graphics, which is a one-time deal. It's making lower third for each of us, a lower third for staff when they're speaking. Just to kind of add some benefit bonus to it. Cause you can't do that in Zoom.
Okay. Secretary Lang?
Um, with option three, does that do anything with, um, AB2249?
Requests?
No, we would handle it the same way. That's why we want to keep our Zoom subscription. Um, that's how we would handle that for remote board member attendance. So that's for board members and not the public. Yeah.
So if we went with option three, there would be no more vote for us, correct?
Yeah, that's, sorry. Yeah.
No, remote would still, remote still would have to exist for us because of 2249.
Okay, okay.
So nothing, nothing would change on that for this, this body. If one of us was missing, we could still zoom in, but wouldn't allow the public to see what's going on during this meeting, like as they are.
And then that's like the same thing too, like with, with my options too. You still have the Zoom option because you're probably still going to have speakers, the accountant or, you know, the auditor, stuff like that to bring in too.
And that wouldn't affect them if we went to option three either.
No, no.
We would keep all that, is my understanding.
Yeah, I know, um, options one and two, or, uh, the one that Director Mattis is talking about are definitely interesting. Uh, it piqued my interest more than option three.
Okay. Vice Chair Sloan?
Um, so right now, the, the one person that's listening to us on Zoom could start singing a song right now and we could all have to hear it.
No, 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 no.
So they could do during public comment though.
They could, they could be turned on by us because it's their time to speak and then take over.
And then sing a lovely song.
Correct. And we cannot cut them off.
Well, they get their three minutes.
They get their three minutes.
They could sing the preamble to the concert.
Correct. Or they could.
Say whatever they want for those three minutes and we sit.
We can't do anything. We can't cut it off. We can't mute them.
We would give them a warning, um, that they have to talk about things within the jurisdiction of the district. And if there was continued disruption, we would be able to stop their transmission.
So, so if they do have some comment there, something to, or an email to you to be read or come here in person.
Yes, right.
I think I'm leaning towards, uh, the option four that, uh, Director Mattis suggested, it seems knowledgeable in the, uh, in the field. And, uh, I admire that. My thoughts.
Okay. Um, for me, I, I did talk to the one constituent who is very, um, always on. And I'm glad that constituent is always on. Um, and correct me if I'm wrong, Terry, but you would like us to turn around and be, you'd still like to be able to see this meeting live and, um, and not with the comment. That doesn't matter to you in our conversation, but you would like to know what's going on live versus just waiting until it came out like the old days. Am I correct?
She walked in. She's not the one on tonight.
A comment in the chat saying correct.
Okay. So, uh, I just wanted to make sure that I, I got that, you know, the, the conversation correct. And then everybody knows that I did talk to, uh, Terry Lineback about, about that. So, um, I think the biggest question um, is the cost that would go along with option four. And I don't know that we have that answer tonight. And or if we could even make that decision tonight, not knowing the cost.
They addressed it.
We don't know the cost.
We don't know. We don't know for sure. We got to make sure.
Yeah.
Yeah. So from what it sounds like, it's pretty much the same cost with the Zoom and everything else that you already have.
So my question to the, the general manager and the clerk of the board and the board itself, not knowing those costs, is there a way for us to being these three options at the moment, is there a way for us to devote on these three options? And then next month, after we get those costs, revisit it and change it from whatever is here to something. So if we were to, I'm going to just throw out there, if we were to pick option two tonight, is there a way next month after we get the information to go? This is the cost associated with the more cost, because option two I know does cost a few dollars more. Um, is there a way to, to revisit that after?
If the board likes, you can continue the item to next meeting.
Good.
Okay. Then we would just get clear direction from Mark as to what, uh, exactly is the formats that you're requesting, uh, so that we can compare it to the Zoom costs that we're aware of at this point.
So real quick on your, so it would be, we would still do Zoom, but we'd also do YouTube, Facebook and other, other social media platforms or would it be?
No, you, you would, the only time you would use Zoom is if one of us needed to be at home doing.
So YouTube would basically become our, uh, would be the, yeah, our channel. Our electronic version for people to watch it from, kind of.
Pretty much. And so like, you know, you, you schedule it ahead of time on the YouTube channels as a countdown. And so if you're subscribed or something like that, you can, you can all send out to Facebook and Twitter. And if somebody has a subscription or, uh, they like us or they're LinkedIn, they'll get us paying. That's live. You can watch. You can come in anytime of the meeting and watch it. If somebody came in a half an hour late, they can rewind it.
We're getting like, interesting. That's why, yes. Okay.
And then once, once it's done, it's, it's there. So you don't have to do anything down the road.
Okay. So.
Do we have to vote on continuing it?
We would. So if that is the, the, where the board would like to go, I would need a motion to continue this next month.
All right. I'll make the motion that we continue this item to next month. Uh, so we have an opportunity to investigate costs associated with, uh, doing it via YouTube and potentially other sites.
So I have a motion by Director Yearwood. Do I hear a second?
I'll send it in.
I have a second by Vice Chair Sloan. All those in favor?
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Director Mattis?
Aye.
Secretary Langen?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Chair Danzel?
Aye.
Thank you, folks. Let's move on to on to item H, board of directors items.
Thank you. Item H1, we have no topics. Item H2, training report. That is Director Mattis completed on-demand webinars through CSDA.
Thank you. Does he need to speak on those or?
Just in general.
No, they were, they were interesting. It was fun. So it was, I think we had six to choose from. So it was enlightening.
Okay. Then let's move on to item H2B, community activity reports. And I will throw it all the way down there to Director Yearwood and there is a lot this month, folks. So let's try and keep them short and concise if we can, please.
Chefs. Yeah, I gotta, you know.
Madison's got two months worth, so it's definitely.
Yet he still has the same amount as me, but that's all right. Um, so let's see here, uh, March 9th, uh, was opening day for, uh, Rosemont Little League. Uh, I popped by there, uh, watched their parade, which was pretty cool. I wish uh, Rancho Little League and Crowe Girl softball still can do parades, but very nice, some classic cars. Um, saw a few people I knew, ran into a board member there. Um, whoever sang the national anthem was phenomenal. Uh, the park looked great. Everything looked great. There's a lot of folks out there having a great time. So then I hopped into the old, uh, car and went over to, uh, Crowe, uh, Regg, Crowe Little League's opening 70th season opening day, a little later in the morning. Gosh, there were a lot of people there. There were so many people there. Um, uh, of course ran into people I knew and all that good stuff. So it was a great little event. They had a lot of, uh, things going on for the kids. I'm surprised they didn't play any games, but, uh, I guess they don't do that. Um, then I popped over on, I've liked like a couple of weeks later, March, uh, 13th, I went to the Folsom Crowe Unified School District, state of our schools, a very interesting, um, uh, event, a lot of great stuff. I was happy to see that Mills Middle School, my alma mater, has a drum line now. So, um, but, uh, very informative, uh, some nice information. Uh, the, uh, superintendent is retiring, so they're going to start their search for her replacement here shortly. Uh, and then last but not least, this, uh, last Saturday, the 16th, I hopped over to Crowe Girl Softball's, uh, 59th opening day. Um, it's a great event. Uh, I met the mom of Rancho Crowe, uh, AKA Linda Budge. Right. Anybody knows Rod Barber? Rod says some, some, some interesting things. So, uh, but it was a great event, uh, good turnout. The weather was perfect. Um, and, um, that's pretty much all I have.
Great. Thank you. Director Mattis?
Uh, yeah, we attended the LAFCO back in January. That was a, an extension from the one that was canceled in October of last year. Um, cause it fell on Halloween. So we just couldn't get scheduling right. So we moved it to, you know, had it in January. Uh, it was kind of a, a lost cause because there was a bunch of stuff that was on the agenda. And when we showed up, the person wasn't there. So there was a lot of things removed. So we spent a lot of time talking and sharing. And so one of the, I brought up our optimization plan. And so that was, so that was good. So a lot of agencies were good to hear that. So looking forward to seeing that. Um, spoke at a, uh, Gold River, uh, Cub Scout meeting. They had to meet a requirement to speak to, uh, an elected official. So I went in there and spoke to them about the position and most of it was questions by the parents. So that, that was good about parks. Um, submitted my Form 700 and, um, attended the Arbor Day, uh, tree planting event, which was really good over there at Dave Roberts Community Park. And brought my kids with me. So that was, that was good. And we planted, was it 20, 24 trees? So that was, that park definitely can use them. So it's going to be nice. Did we find out if that one that was by us, did that one get replaced or did that one make it?
Uh, I think it's making it. I don't think that we would have known if it was going to die that soon. Also, wait until next year. We'll find out if it makes it. It was interesting though, because it was really twisted around and.
Yeah.
Somebody dropped. Quite the education about it.
No, it was like the root twisted and grew inside. So they had to cut it.
Oh.
There. So, but it was just, it was just. but it was just, it was just interesting kind of overhearing the 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 process of planting a tree. I never never thought of that. So when I went home, I had to transplant my wife's lemon tree to a bigger pot. So I made sure, you know.
The things you learn being park district director. Secretary Lang.
Yeah, so March seventh, attended the Rosemont Community Association Meeting, really just gave a report on the sports courts out there at Rosemont Community Park. And what I can say is that everyone's eager, eager for it to to be finished. And so there's, there's a lot of excitement out there about that. So that's great to hear. And then March ninth, Rosemont Little League Opening Day. I'm one of the assistant coaches for my son's team, so I was involved in the parade. It's always a fun thing to do. Had just classic cars, fire truck, police cars, just cool things that going on. There's a hundred and eighty players this year. So that's really good for us. And yeah, it's just fun to be out there, be at the park. And then also just to be able to just be out there with the community and hear what they have to say. And yeah, my son loves baseball so much that I was there from like eight AM to four PM watching baseball, but I will say that he gets that from me. So but yeah, it's a great time.
Great, thank you.
How come we don't have the anniversary for Rosemont Little League? We had Little League seventieth, the girls softball fifty ninth. What anniversary did Rancho Mont celebrate?
That's a great question.
He's going to continue that to the next next meeting.
We'll want that answer next next month, next month, Secretary. Vice Chair Sloan, your report for the month, please.
Please do not. November twenty seventh, I attended the Brecka meeting. Just to give you a heads up, I think it's in the packet here. The Easter account for Breck is going to be March thirtieth at ten thirty AM. We also discussed the Corps of Engineering plant this using the Larchmont Community Park as their stage area, staging area. They're very concerned about that. I told them that we are going to have a walkthrough with staff here and that I would report back after I had that walkthrough. Let them know. On Tuesday, March fifth, I attended the Rancho Crew Athletic Association meeting, and they're currently in the process of creating code of conduct signage that would be put in every one, every dugout or in every play area around the district and the school district and wherever parks that are in my property, sign and putting it at the at the the majors field, at least two signs there. So I'll keep you posted on on that. Next thing on Friday, March eighth, I attended the twenty fourth Annual Community Volunteer Awards. I just want to say that I that I was part of an organization that was honored. It was Rancho Cordova Arts. And I was, it was a nice event, very nice event. On Saturday, March ninth, I attended the Rancho Cordova Little League seventieth opening day. They had the youngest player and oldest player, the youngest player would pitch the also pitch to the oldest player. The youngest player is three years old and the oldest was fourteen. Can you imagine? I imagine I probably would have been really good if I started at three years old. But my dad would have put a golf club in my hand instead. But it was a nice event. Seventieth was it's it was a big deal for them. They didn't have games scheduled because they wanted kids to have and enjoy all the festivities that they had planned. Let's see, on the same day, I did go over to College Glen Little League where my kids played, and I also stopped by Rosemont and see what was going on. On Tuesday, March twelfth, the CARPD board met. We had a board meeting. And the next and then the next day, we went to the Capitol, the board meeting. We discussed items such as the upcoming conference. And at that board meeting, we we chose, we elected Lori Wilson, Assembly Member Lori Wilson is our legislator of the year, and hopefully that person will be at our conference in May. We met with a lot of other legislators, legislative people at the Capitol. We, you know, learned about, one thing that we learned about is the state budgets, a big deficit there, so we're not expecting that very easy to get state bonds. But there is a lot, there were some opportunities in the federal level that I had given that piece of paper to our general manager to explore most federal funding grant opportunities. On the next one would be Wednesday, March thirteenth, that's the same one, Wednesday, March thirteenth, that same night, we came back to Roseville. And I attended the CPRS Volunteer Awards Banquet where Yanni Jepeté, I guess it's Jepeté, Jepeté was honored for the his viewing binoculars at the Aaron Landing Park. That was a great thing to see him and his family there, and they really enjoyed the the festivities. Was that at Wood Creek Country Club? Rockland, I don't know if Rockland. Next one, Thursday, March fourteenth, I attended the Spring Wellness Potluck over at Hagan Park. And we collected a lot of cans. Unfortunately, the the was it the senior center and the and the the golf course and some other facility won the total of cans that came in. There was a lot. We gave a lot to the food locker. I I can't, I like to see the picture. I haven't seen it yet unless it's been posted. I just didn't notice it. The next thing was on Saturday, March sixteenth, I attended the the girls softball. It's their fifty ninth year. Next year will be the big six oh. And the next one was Tuesday, March nineteenth, was just yesterday, I attended the Attakes of Lincoln Village Community Meeting. And or the manager, Micah Runner, Rancho Cordova, was discussing the opportunity of becoming a city council member. And it was, it was, it was an interesting, enlightening thing because I didn't realize I was so somewhat so involved with that. One person did ask about the possibility of having some type of an archery range in Lincoln Village Park. And I I didn't know. I didn't know what to tell them. Yeah, so I said, that's kind of the liability would be kind of off the charts. Once I use the little rubber tips with the.
See what the optimized plan has to say.
That's, that's it.
Thank you. My list is a little little shorter. Arbor Day Tree, Tree Planting. The great, great event, like Eric Matta said, twenty four trees. It was Arbor Day, so the city presented us with a Arbor Day proclamation. March fifth, I had CARPD Conference Committee, conference is coming up quick for us. The this year, the sponsorship dollars are the largest they've ever been, which is, which is great for us. The attendance, right now, we've got eighteen districts coming. So we're still pushing, pushing that up. We heard comment that the reason, and I actually heard this at the board meeting on the twelfth, that a lot of districts hadn't made up their minds because they weren't sure what was going to be covered at the conference. So they wanted to know what was going to happen at conference before they showed up and spent their money. So that got out and numbers have gone up since then. Thirteenth, myself and Vice Chair Sloan, both being on the Board of Directors here, CARPD did our Capitol visit. Met with assembly members and state parks, talk about what's going on. CARPD is has a is has our name on a bill to help with statewide with remote meetings for smaller commissions, things like that. In a sense, our PMID committees, but in more rural areas where they might not be able to drive, you know, forty five minutes to to a place to sit down and have a meeting, but still will give them the opportunity to have a Zoom meeting and things like that, because currently that that's going away at the state level. They don't want, they want everybody to be together again now that COVID's over. But we look at it in our organization, and it actually gives an opportunity for younger people to get involved that don't, you know, can you imagine spending forty minute, forty five minutes driving to a meeting at twenty five years old because you want to get involved in government in between your schooling, this, that, and the other, and then hit forty five minutes back. So it just gives them that opportunity or it gives, you know, seniors an opportunity to still be involved in their commissions and things like that throughout the state and not have to travel. So that's, that's a bill that we're, we're working on with Assemblywoman Pacheco, and she's got it through the Assembly. Now it's on to the Senate. We'll see how that goes. Things have changed this year at the Capitol, so we'll see. After that, as Vice Chair Sloan said, attended CPRS District Two Awards Banquet. Yes, a young man in our district did earn an award, but also just besides that, we've got our staff, the great staff that we do have here at the district that are members of that Board of Directors, which is a phenomenal thing. I think vice presidents. I don't remember all the positions, vice president, secretary. Yeah, so yeah, incoming president, and then we've got members that sit on other committees within that Board of Directors. So it's really great that our staff is capable enough to be out there and represent us along with Area Two with CPRS. And then the next day I did attend the potluck. I will leave it at that. It's well attended. The staff is always there. You know, things are some things are changing, which is, which is a good thing, some programs with the staff at the staff level, and I won't take anybody's thunder on that. I'll let other people kill things. But but, you know, it's always great seeing the staff and and getting to talk to them and, you know, and know what's going on. And I will let staff talk about that and their reports on other things that have happened at that event. So I am done there. Let's go on to item C, comments by staff on non-agenda items.
Item I one is the district wide monthly progress report for March. Turn it over to General Manager Larkin.
My ex clerk Jones. I always love to. All right, so this month I was able to meet with representatives from Senator Ashby's office to educate and ask for support on any funding opportunities to continue to make improvements in the area that she has the district around, which is the Rosemont area. So that was great to connect with them and get them to have us beyond their radar, to look out for us for potential funding opportunities. I also received a check donation from the Rancho Cordova Rotary Club in support of our CRPD hopping and hunting at Hagan event. So I joined them for a presentation and giving them updates on the district. And we appreciated their five hundred dollar donation and their continued volunteerism at our event. Great group of people, so very happy about that. The all staff wellness potluck, yes, it was one of the larger ones we've had. People were definitely hungry. So we did collect canned foods. And we collected seven hundred and twenty canned food items, twenty one, actually, one was still in my car when I emptied it out. So we we donated those to the food locker on Friday. They were overjoyed with the delivery of such a large amount of donations. So fantastic going with the staff. Apparently pizza is a motivator. And so the group that brought in the most cans was the Senior Center, Mater Sports Center and the golf course. So they'll be getting a pizza party for their win this time.
What was the difference?
So it was pretty, I mean, they kind of just killed it. The the second place was like two hundred and forty cans, and they were at like three something, three sixty or something. So job well done. And I even knew about that before when I was serving food at St. Patrick's Day, the day before, I looked in the back office, I saw four boxes, came back here, I was like, more food. So anyway, next time, next time. I did have an opportunity to attend Visit Rancho Cordova's Destination Event yesterday, actually. It was an opportunity for board members to go out to different tourist attractions in the area. So we ended up going to the Nimbus Fish Hatchery, took a tour of that. And then from there, we went to what they called the Nimbus Area, which is Fort Rock Brewery and the Escape Room. We had a facilitator there talking about putting on our tourism hats and seeing what are some of the benefits and maybe core packages that we could help them offer in the community going forward. So it was a really great event. They had approximately, I'd say about fifteen different folks, mostly hoteliers. We had someone from the airshow, myself, and it was a great day just to connect and brainstorm some ideas to draw some more people into our community as tourists. The sexual harassment prevention training, all board members are current until twenty twenty five. There is no requirement to attend the training offered at this year's CARPD Annual Conference. If you would like to, you're more than welcome, but I would not suggest it. Kirk Jones and Denise Daniels are our new in-house California Notary Publix. They passed their exam and they now have that service in house. We used to have to go to FedEx or have maybe some city folks come and help us notarize documents. So congratulations to those two. The test was pretty hard from what I hear, and so we're just very proud and happy that we now have that service in house. So congratulations to Denise and Danielle. For our CIP project updates, we have forty two projects this year, twenty six are completed and six are activated and in progress, which is fantastic. Jim has been doing, and his staff have been doing an outstanding job getting those projects done. We also had Human Resources did an intensive workshop. They did a training on effectively managing leaves of absence and reasonable accommodations to learn their best practices, new laws, and then to ensure the district is following all those new requirements. So thank you for that. It's keeping us in our best practices. Let's see, we are working on a couple of different projects with the city. One being the sidewalk extension project down to the American River. They are facing this project into two. The first phase will happen this summer, and that phase goes from Coloma down Chase to where the parking lot ends at the school district. So that'll be completed in the summer of twenty twenty four. The project Phase Two, which affects us the most, is the summer of twenty twenty five. I think we planned it maybe two days before the Fourth of July. What's up, Brian? Yeah. No, but for us to have that sidewalk be extended, cross over the intersection of where that four way stop is, and then go down to the left side of the entrance into Hagan Community Park and do a nice, nice new sidewalk all the way out to the American River. So that's an exciting project. Staff have also been working on the possibility of bringing a dog park to the White Rock Community Park. The city has received a grant. They've done some community outreach in that neighborhood. And they will be bringing that project along with some other projects for consideration to the City Council on April second. If it is funded, we will do a joint use agreement and interagency agreement, actually. And then go back out to community outreach for that neighborhood and ensure we have a conceptual design and something that meets their their needs and interests. So we will see how that goes. We are anticipating a mid-April opening the new sports courts at Rosemont Community Park to the public. We finally got the Tesco panels. The first small panel arrived this week. We have a large panel that we still need to have arrive and then we'll install. The walkthrough final inspections are scheduled for April second. We still need some time if there are things that we find that are not completed. So we're anticipating a open to the public fences down in mid-April. So that's exciting news as well. We talked in the past about the American River Levy Project. They had some significant public outreach. And so for they're going to need to respond to the public's questions that they had. They're still in the process of formulating those responses. They'll have to go back out to the public and give a formal presentation responding to that. So there is a delay. There is still a plan for. There is still a plan for us to tour our board for the Larchmont Community Park area that they're looking to use to propose a staging area. So more to come on that. But there is a bit of a delay due to the robust community interest and questions that they need to respond to before we do that. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Jill, our amazing Parks and Recreation Director.
Well, thank you.
Do they have any more? Is that the only public comment section? They had that one webinar that didn't go very well?
They've had three, I believe. So that was the last of the three that we joined.
Okay.
And I think they had one the night earlier and then they had one early on. So this, that last one we all attended was the most highly attended. But from that, as you know, there was numerous questions. And so they actually received those questions. They opened it up for a public comment period. They received all the questions and they're in the process of responding to them. But I believe they're planning on going back out for a public response meeting. And I will let you all know once we hear about that. Yeah, maybe one and maybe two. I'm not exactly sure, but I don't think they know yet. They're still in the process of responding. So
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll give you more information as I find out.
All right. So as you can see from the report, lots going on in the Parks and Recreation world. Just wanted to highlight a few aquatics. Aquatic season is back, which is awesome. So the Cordova Community Pool opened to the Cordova High School Swim Team. They use the pool in the spring for their season. So we're excited that they have thirty registered and rostered swimmers this year, which is outstanding. We also have our registrations for swim teams open as well as the clinics that start April first. And then our spring lessons start April twenty-second. So really happy to see that our pool is being used and activated. Now we just need to get the warm weather to go along with the pool. And then if you had an opportunity to read that our garden over at Nosac has been demolished because we are replacing it with a brand new garden and some beds during the Spring Day of Service, which is coming up on May eighteenth. So Heather and her team and Martine Fonseca and his team did a little bit of a free demo so that it makes it a little bit easier for the volunteers on May eighteenth to rebuild that garden. But we are super excited to be able to do that. I know Heather's been wanting to, to take on this project for a while and it's needed. We do obviously use that garden every single year. And Heather and her team use it for the Green Thumb Lunches that are a very successful program that obviously our community really enjoys. So we're looking forward to the Spring Day of Service on May eighteenth. Again, hoping all of you will be able to make it out, but I'll cover that in a second. So Heather, congratulations for finally getting that project off your long list of things to do. And then with that, I'll go over the special event invitation page. So we do have hopping and hunting this Saturday at Hagan Community Park and the Cordova Community Pool. So there will be pool use this year. It is from eleven AM to one and it is rain or shine because we know that the rain is coming. But we have already planned for that. So if it does rain, if it's wet, whatever it may be, Nicole and her staff have a backup plan. Pool's wet anyhow, so it doesn't matter if it's raining. We just encourage the little ones to come in their little rain boots and have a really great time. So rain or shine this Saturday. Hope to see you all out there. Creek Week Cleanup on Sunday is still on. We've got about ten participants making sure that we are able to clean up around the Cordova Creek at Hagan Community Park on Sunday from ten to noon. Then, as mentioned before by Vice Chairperson Rick Salone, Breka has their Easter Egg Hunt at Riviera East Park on Sunday, excuse me, on Saturday, March thirtieth at ten thirty AM. We have the Senior Resource Fair at Nosac one to three on April twenty-fourth. And then the Kids' Day in the Park, which is hosted by the Court of a Community Council, which basically takes up most of Hagan Community Park that day. Will be on Saturday, April twenty-seventh from eleven AM to three PM. And then there's that big day, that big day of Spring Day of Service. So hopefully you guys are holding that date. It is hosted by the City of Rancho Cordova. And it's gonna be various locations throughout the city. We obviously have a few locations throughout CRPD where we are gonna be doing volunteer projects. We have one at Nosac that I just mentioned. We have a couple of tree plantings as well as some projects at Hagan. The details did come out via social today. If you haven't had a chance to see them, we've also shared that social media post on our, on our social. And what I will do is I will put together pretty, pretty, pretty much an invite and I'll invite you all to that Day of Service now that we have wrapped up the final details for it. So with that, that ends my report. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Let's move on to item J, informational items.
Thank you. Item J one is the Articles Correspondence and Public Outreach. We have the two newsletters. And J two is your calendar.
Thank you, ma'am. Let's move on to final item of tonight, item K, adjournment. So at this time, folks, we have reached a point where we will be adjourning to our next regular board meeting of the Board of Directors of the Cordova Recreation Park District on Wednesday, April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, six thirty PM. Thank you, folks.